Good morning. I'd call to order the regular meeting of August the 6th, 2025. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mr. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Beck.
Here.
Ms. Chauncey.
Here.
Mr. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Hilton.
Here.
Dr. Mackey.
Here.
Mr. Sharp.
Here.
Mr. Shipley.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Chairman Eversole. Here. Indication pledge be conducted by Commissioner Mackey, so if I will please rise.
Thank you. Chairman Commissioners, we have Pastor Jamie Benoy. He's from the Trinity Lutheran Church. He's going to lead us in the prayer, and I'll lead us in the pledge.
Thank you for inviting me this morning. Let us bow our heads. Dear loving and gracious God, first, we say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today, that there will be many, and thank you for the many and abundant blessings you give us. In scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those with very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I pray for the agenda that's set before them. Please give us assurance of what we would please you and what will benefit those who live and work and around our beautiful city of Chattanooga. In all this, we pray in your name. Amen.
The cross of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you, Commissioner Mackey. Have no official presentations today, but we do have some announcements that we're going to do. So we have the honorable Judge Phil Y'all.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here with you this morning for a good occasion. I'm here this morning to, really, to introduce formally. I've tried to introduce him to a lot of folks, and we've been making the rounds, but I wanted to come before you all as a body and introduce Keith Grant to you all. Our court administrator, a longtime court administrator, the only administrator I've ever had, and the one that had been there for, well, over 30 years at Juvenile Court, retired over a couple, two months ago. And Keith is in his fifth week, four and a half weeks, as Juvenile Court Administrator. And if you've ever questioned my wisdom or judgment before, I don't believe you'll question it this time, because it's a real coup and a good hire for the court and for the county to have Keith join us there. He's a very accomplished attorney, left a very lucrative and successful practice, a high-rise office in the Republic Building to come work for us, because he has the skills, more importantly, he has the heart for our kind of work. And he's proven that over and over in his laywork, and now he's going to get to do it full-time. I've known Keith for well over 20 years, and you just won't find anybody saying anything bad about Keith Grant. He grew up in the area, went to ETSU as an honor student, and then got his law degree from LSU. I think he still kind of cheers for the Tigers. That's probably his worst fault, but we'll overlook it this fall. Particularly, one of the reasons, too, I wanted to come today is to thank a whole lot of people. Lee Browner, of course, Sandra Ellis with HR and the financial folks. Todd and his folks have been really, really helpful in helping us integrate Keith into the county way and the county system. We met with, of course, the county mayor's office and staff and with him, and just really appreciate all the help that they've been to Keith. If you've been by Third Street in the last couple of weeks, and I don't know, I haven't asked him if he's heard Miley Cyrus, you know, hit by the wrecking ball or anything in his head, but in his second week, we literally moved our lobby all the way over on the other side of the building for a temporary lobby that's going to be there for the next nine months to a year, and literally took a wrecking ball to the front of the court. Thanks to you all and some work that was put in place or started several years ago and is finally matriculating. We will have a much safer and secure front end of the Juvenile Courthouse at Third Street. And hopefully, late spring, we'll get you all out there for some sort of ribbon cutting when that job is finished. But that's just one of the things that Keith came in tackling right off the bat. And in that regard, Commissioner Hilton, of course, has been a big help. Mike Kirk and Lamont Bagby has been a huge help, as well as Matthew Twitchell and Angela Russ and the Robert Roberts Construction Crew. It's gone better so far than I anticipated. And my staff, you know, I'm here today representing, you know, our almost 100 staffers at Juvenile Court who are professionals who show up every day to do this work that they love. In fact, I brought two with me today, and I want to especially recognize Denise Cook, who filled in. She, of course, is our court director, and she carried an extra load most of the summer in that interim. And you all, most of you all know her and know what kind of job she does. And to her left is Kayla Knotts, who also carries a heavy load at Juvenile Court. Keith, in summary, and I know, I appreciate you putting me at the top of the docket, because I know you've got a busy docket, so I'm going to shut up. But I'll just, I'll close by saying this. Keith's come in from his world, from the practice of law and what he knows, and he's been asking a lot of questions, and they're good questions. Most of them are good questions, you know, starting, he asked, you know, why does the control room in the juvenile detention unit look like it was designed by a B-movie producer for an early version of Star Trek Enterprise, you know? It really does just about look that bad, and we're going to be coming to you all in the next upcoming months to talk about some of that. He also asked, you know, what happens if I push the button that has the Post-It note covering that says, "Do not push"? And he's asked a lot of questions, like, why did we do it that way? Or why, you know, why are things done that way? And most of the time, either historically or through policy or statutorily, we can give them a good answer. But sometimes, the answer's simply been, we've always done it that way. And those are good questions to ask and good answers to discuss. So I'm real proud to introduce to you Keith Grant, Court Administrator, Juvenile Court. Come say hello, Keith.
Good morning, and I think I've met most of you all outside of here, but it's great to be introduced and meet you all formally here. Like the judge said, I think you said, I'm formerly a practicing attorney, and I think you said I have, what, 30 minutes to talk this morning? Okay, but I'm happy to be here, and like I said, I did come out of the law practice. When the judge asked me to come on board, it didn't take long. One, Ms. Farnell had left, and so I couldn't fight against her anymore. But also, to get the chance to work with the Juvenile Court and help that great body over there, to work with Judge Phil Y'all, and hopefully help some of the families and the court over there, it wasn't a hard decision for me to make, and so I'm excited to be here. I've asked some maybe decent questions. I've asked some really poor questions as well, and hopefully, you all won't see much of that. Well, I do have to say, I did graduate from LSU, but my oldest child starts UT next week. And so, just in case that gets me any favor with the folks up here on the commission. So if you'll have any questions, I look forward to working with you all. If you all have any questions, happy to answer those, but otherwise, thanks again, and I'll be back soon, I'm sure.
Chairman, before we step away, it's almost like forgetting to recognize your wife, you know, at an important event. Keep harmony in the family. I left out a very important person in his staff, Gary Baylor. I don't think I mentioned Mr. Baylor a minute ago, and I sure didn't mean to overlook him. But he and his staff, the clerk staff at the court, how could I overlook you? Have been a huge help during this transition as well.
Well, he's a Penn State fan, so I mean, Penn State fan.
Clerk Baylor and Denise have been fantastic also in my transition. It's been great working with them so far, and I anticipate it'll continue to be so. Chairman?
You got a couple of lights on. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, you know, Judge Phil Y'all, you know, I've known you quite a while. You're a great judge. You're a great person. I never knew how good a manager you were. Boom. There you go. Good job. Congratulations. And Keith, welcome to the team.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to say, welcome to the team. We appreciate you. You've got some pretty big shoes to fill. Sam was wonderful. And Judge Phil Y'all, you're a wonderful man. You do an excellent job. And on a personal note, congratulations on the new grandbaby.
Thank you. That's new as of yesterday. First time grandfather. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. Young man, you've got a, we appreciate your desire to help the young people. You've got a big job by trying to straighten out the judge and Gary Baylor, but...
I've recognized that quickly, yes.
You guys will make a wonderful team. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now, welcome to the county team, and I tell you, I can't think of a better group of individuals that truly care for what they do and how they do it, from Judge Phil Y'all, Gary Baylor. I think the world of, I think he's in the whole team, to me, is a class act, and I think they do just a tremendous job. They have the best interest of individuals and the decisions that they make and how they perform in juvenile court. So thank you for all of you for what you do. To me, you do an amazing job, so thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Appreciate you. So welcome.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right, we'll move to Sheriff Garrett.
Good morning. I'm proud to introduce to this body the newest member to my executive staff, which is Deputy Chief Tim Davis. He will, as of today, serve as the Deputy Chief of Corrections over at the Hamilton County Jail. Comes to us after an extensive search and moved to Tennessee after retiring from roles in law enforcement in the state of California. He served for the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office, which is the fifth-largest jail system in the state of California. And as I said, he had moved here as our search began, and we're fortunate to find him after that extensive search. But he is assuming a very important role for this county, and I believe his experience that he has obtained over the last 25 years during his career will serve him well. He retired from that agency as the Assistant Sheriff in that county. So just excited to introduce him to this body and to the citizens of Hamilton County.
Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Excited to be a part of the county, the community, and the sheriff's office. Looking forward to it. I know there's a lot of challenges, but we got great men and women working in the facilities, and excited to work with them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, see no lights, so welcome to the county team. Okay, our next one, Mr. Perkins. Perry Perkins, you and Mr. Hill.
Chaplain Hill.
Good morning. It's good being a place where they open up prayer and say the prayers to the country. I'm just proud to be here. Chairman, thank you for allowing us to speak. I just want to address, and Commissioners, I appreciate you all letting me speak. Elected officials and staff, thank you for letting us speak. So what I want to talk about is, we did a fundraiser at the Elks Lodge, the 26th of this month. Chief Hill, yeah, heard to me, Chiefs. Chaplain Hill called me the first of the month. He had a friend that he went to church with, little girl had cancer, and he said, Perry, I know you do a lot of fundraising. We need to raise some money for these kids, for this little girl, for her hospital bill. Well, I told him, I said, let me call you back in about 30 minutes. I called our county commissioner, Lee Hilton, humble guy, just real humble, and told him what was going on, told him we needed some, need some help. And I said, what about a pancake breakfast? Well, he has a meeting the 4th Saturday of every month at the Elks Lodge for the friends of Apesun each brand. He said, we'll just have it there. And so we started working on it. He contacted all the elected officials. I think the sheriff sent something through his staff and all the county people and the city people in government were notified. And we had quite a few elected officials that showed up that morning for the breakfast. And I want to thank all of them for being there. So in two and a half hours, with Lee's help and the help of the Elks Lodge, had quite a few people volunteering, we raised about $9,200 for that little girl's medical care that day. Since that time, we've had more money coming in. I think we're now, what, about $13,000? We're at about $13,000 for that little girl. And just want to thank the commissioner publicly. I know he's a humble guy, and he's not one to wave the flag for himself, but I want to thank him. It's good to see some old school teachers. Mr. Highlander was a student teacher when I was in high school at Tyler. That tells you how old he is. And then, of course, Warren Mackey was one of my professors at Chattanooga State, one of my history professors. Good to see y'all. Without any further ado, I'm going to introduce Chaplain Greg Hill. He's retired Signal Mountain Police Department. He is a DARE officer and SRO up on Signal Mountain. And now he's volunteering at the chaplain at Hamilton County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Perry. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to say something this morning. I want to reiterate what Perry had just said. On behalf of the family, I've known him for a long time, and this child, she's 13 years old, and they found out she had cancer. They get in the hospital, and work has begun and everything, and lo and behold, no insurance. Of course, the bills are mounting up. Now she's in ICU with cancer. And so I went down to visit the family, and I said, what can I do? A few years ago, my wife was hospitalized with cancer, and we had fundraisers and blood drives, and I remembered all that, how it helped me, and I said, we got to do something. So I had a blood drive before we had the pancake breakfast, and we had over 55 people show up to give blood. And then I contacted Perry, I said, Perry, I need some help. We need to raise some money. And this pancake breakfast came up, and I want to thank Lee Hilton, a wonderful job for allowing that to even take place. Chairman Eversole, thank you for being there, support. I know the Judge Phil Y'all was there. There's quite a few people there. It's over 400 people there. And on behalf of the family, I just want to say thank you, and also thank you Sheriff Garrett, if he's still here, for supporting me and letting me do all this. It's been great. But thank you very much. Thank you again.
Okay, you're welcome. We've got Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Hilton, outstanding work you've done. And I want to tell you, if I can twist my buddy's arm over here to make a contribution, I'm going to make one, too.
You're allowed to give 100. I got it.
I'm going down there in just a little while to see the family.
I didn't get to go that day. Also, I would see why the cancer.
Commissioner Shipley's mic's not working, so. I'm trying to get it from up here, too, and it's not coming on.
You know, I want to say this. I said it last week. Commissioner Hilton has a huge heart, and he, while everybody else was fellowshipping and eating and stuff, he was working, and he was cooking. He was making sure everybody else was getting taken care of. And when it was all said and done, then he ate. So that just shows you his passion and what about it. Commissioner Hilton, I said it last week, you're a class guy, and I appreciate you. Now, I'll set you up. I'll turn the mic over to you.
Well, I do appreciate everyone who came out. I appreciate you all approaching me and allowing me to help. As a father of two daughters, how could not, you know? So, thank you. Thank you all.
I failed to mention the father of this child. She is adopted, but he's still the father. Retired City of Chattanooga Police Officer. Thank you again. This is great. I wasn't expecting this.
Don't leave, Greg. They're still in their pockets, okay? Now, we want to thank y'all for your help and your support, and keep this little girl in your prayers. Keegan Bradley is this little girl's name. And she's in pretty bad shape.
Commissioner Sharp?
Chairman, I didn't bring my checkbook with me, but just for the record, if anybody else wanted to make out a check for this organization, who would they make that check out to?
Cop Church? Chaplain, or Perry, where's it go?
Yeah, if you want to write another check and send it to, you can give it to Lee. He'll get it to us. You can either make it to the family, Beth, Bradley, or you can make it to Cop Church, either one. And that'll go to the family.
Thank you, Chairman.
And this mother, just to tell you, this mother was in the hospital from June 1st until we had this pancake breakfast on the 26th. She did not leave that little girl's side. And the only reason she came that day, she had somebody to fill in for her that was a family member that took care of her. But thank you. I appreciate your help, and keep everybody in your prayers, and thanks for your donations today, too.
Thank you for your donations.
Okay. I think that's got everybody but one, so. Did you get his mic working? Working on it? So him and Commissioner Mackey going to share? Madam Clerk, can I get you to read something into the record for recognition? If you got a copy of it. Okay. If I could get Roddy Coe to meet me at the mic.
Hamilton County, Tennessee Board of Commissioners recognizes Americans with Disabilities Act 35th Anniversary. On behalf of the officials and the citizens of Hamilton County, it is our pleasure to extend our heartfelt thanks to you for your outstanding and invaluable service. Signed into law on July 26, 1990, the Americans with Disabilities Act reaffirmed our nation's commitment to liberty, dignity, and equal opportunity for individuals with disabilities. Building on earlier laws like the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, the ADA has empowered millions to live, learn, and work with greater independence. In Hamilton County, we honor these protections and the values they represent: fairness, inclusion, strong families, and respect for every individual's purpose and potential. As we celebrate this milestone, we reaffirm our community's commitment to accessibility, opportunity, and the full participation of individuals with disabilities in all aspects of life. Whereas such excellence deserves public acclaim and recognition, now therefore be it resolved by the County of Hamilton that the certificate of recognition be conferred presented the 6th day of August, 2025.
Mr. Coe, here's a certificate that each commissioner has individually signed in recognition of July being the Americans with Disabilities Act 35th Anniversary. So thank you for what you do, your contribution to our community. Here's your certificate.
Absolutely.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of the Tennessee Disability Coalition, Chairman Eversole, and to each member of this commission, thank you. Your recognition of this landmark legislation is not merely a formality. It is a powerful affirmation of the rights, dignity, and contributions of over 61 million Americans with disabilities, including many citizens right here in Hamilton County. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move into our meeting. Minutes needing entered and recorded for recess meeting on July the 9th, 2025. The agenda session, July the 9th, 2025. The regular meeting for July the 16th, 2025 would be, will the commission? Second, Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconds that motion. Mr. Sharp?
Yeah, Chairman, thank you. I just noticed on here the report, the procurement PO is reported. We received that in our mailboxes. I didn't recall seeing mine. Maybe I'll double-check.
It's in SERP.
Oh, right, but we had asked previously, I believe, one of the commissioners, not me, had asked that we receive those, a hard copy in our mailboxes. And I didn't see that there, so, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, so with Commissioner Smith's made the motion, Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. Seeing no lights, no one standing for comment. Roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Then we have one report to enter into the record.
We do.
That will move into resolutions. First resolution is 825-1, so Madam Clerk, read the captions.
Resolution 825-1, a resolution to approve and accept applications for notary public positions, the bonds and oaths of notaries previously elected.
Will be, will the commission?
Motion up for a second.
Mr. Graham makes the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconded the motion. Seeing no lights, no one standing for comment. Roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes, 825-1 passes, 825-2.
Resolution 825-2, a resolution to reappoint one member to the Sheriff's Civil Service Advisory Board for three-year terms, beginning August 6, 2025, and ending August 6, 2028. This will reappoint Jody Millard.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Shipley made the motion. Commissioner Hilton seconded the motion. See no lights, no one standing for comment, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman Eversole?
Yes, 825-2 passes, 825-3.
Resolution 825-3, a resolution to reappoint one member to the Hamilton County Health and Safety Hearing Board, beginning August 6, 2025, and ending August 6, 2029. This will reappoint Ralph Mann.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Highlander?
Second.
Made the motion. Commissioner Mackey seconded that motion. See no lights, no one standing for comment, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, 825-3 passes. We've had one resolution that needs to be walked on, so. See our attorney, Ms. Varnell?
Yes. The commission should have a copy before you. It's a resolution authorizing the Hamilton County Attorney to hire outside counsel based on the matter that was discussed at the legal meeting last week.
Move for approval?
Second.
Mr. Baker made the motion. Commissioner Smith seconded that motion. Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, Chair. Is the resolution number going to be read into the record?
We need to rate, read it into record. So 825-12 is a resolution, so we'll read it in the record.
Resolution 825-12, a resolution authorizing the Hamilton County Attorney to hire outside counsel.
Thank you, Commissioner Mackey.
Do you need another motion, Chairman?
I think our motions are there. Their motions, Commissioner Baker and seconded, Commissioner Smith. So see no more lights, no one standing, roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, so 825-12 passes. We'll move into finance. So. Commissioner Smith?
Thanks, sir. Madam Clerk, 825-4, please.
Resolution 825-4, a resolution to waive the procurement rules and authorize the county mayor to transfer one surplus vehicle to Hamilton County Star's Rescue.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconds the motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman Eversole?
825-4 passes, yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, 825-5, please.
Resolution 825-5, a resolution to relinquish Hamilton County's interests in a 1995 Ford F-450 co-titled with Cell Creek Volunteer Fire Department.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Baker seconded that motion. No lights, no one standing for comment, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, 825-5 passes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, 825-6, please.
Resolution 825-6, a resolution recognizing the accomplishment of the Chattanooga Prepory School Sentinels in winning the 2024-2025 Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association State Basketball Championship and awarding funds from the Hamilton County Schools Champions Fund for the purchase of championship rings.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Smith made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. Mr. Beck?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, Ms. Chairman, I never get tired of honoring young men and women who excel in sports and who have a potential becoming of solid citizens for our future. We have a future. And the future is in the bosom of our young people. And you young men are going 40 years into the future, and we can't go. But what we do for you and all of the accolades that we give you and all the support that we give you, wow, you will take that to the future with you. And you'll be our message to the future. So Commissioner Mackey, thank you. And thank this commission for agreeing to bring this honor to these young men.
Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mackey?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the commission, it is indeed a great, great honor to make this presentation. I'm going to begin by asking the new principal, Dr. Troy Kemp, to come forward. And let's find out who he is, because for this school, we're hitting a reset button. And I want the commission to know what is taking place at Chattanooga Prep. Dr. Kemp, if you would. And, and don't be bashful. Tell people who you are, because the leadership of this school, the leadership right now is very, very critical. And I want them to know it's in good hands.
Thank you.
You bet.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As Dr. Mackey said, he gave me the doctor title. I'll take it right now. I have a master's, but I tell people sometimes you have a PhD in living. You spend time on this earth long enough, right? So you get credit for that. But certainly, my name is Troy Kemp, and I'm the new CEO of Prep Public Schools. Now, we actually have a principal as well. But right now, I'm over Chattanooga and Knoxville, but my focus is Chattanooga. I was at the McCauley School when Chattanooga Prep was the first conceived. And I work with the Allens in terms of what boys need in this city. Because in these buildings, you know what populates this building. When you look at juvenile courts, boys represent 85% of discipline problems, 85% of incarcerated youth. There's a boy crisis in America. You can play defense or you can play offense. And one of the things that I learned is this, this school kind of came up and ascended that leadership is very important in making sure that you are consistent with what you do, no matter what the weather is. When I got a call that this school, some things were not going right, I realized that it's not my fault, but it's my responsibility to kind of step up and step in, in a city that I spent 27 years of my life in, and understanding that you can't stop caring no matter where you live. And one of the things that we're trying to make sure we instill with these young men is that you have to stay ready at all times, and you can't depend on motivation to move. You have to have habits, great habits. And that's how all of you got in this room right now. Sometimes they don't see the model for it. There's a standard that we did, we, we had to clean up before we, it's just like remodeling things. We had to go in and find out what was wrong, what needed to be fixed, but create systems that would protect us from our own even instincts and emotions. A lot of decisions were made by this, for the school based on how people felt versus what the system says. You have laws, we have laws that will help us to understand. One of the things that we've come in with confidence is the school. We had to go in and hire basically almost 50% of the staff we had to replace, most of the administration. We lost about 15% of the students. But we just opened with more students than we had last year. Because part of it is they have to have confidence, and not just sight, they have to have vision. Vision is greater than sight. Your vision, you can close your eyes and have a vision. But in order to have a vision, you have to have a target, and you have to have a purpose. And one thing I know with young men is that when they have a target, when they have a purpose, when they have a model, they're more likely to get there. And so the team that we've created, the team that we put in, and all of you, I got more handshakes and business cards and things in this nation, because people want this school, this, this city needs this school. These young men don't even know how much this city needs them to be great. And so we have to remind them, because the world sometimes tells them that it's not possible. Their sight tells them to stay in the bed, and play Playstation, and do something else, because that's where your value is. And they don't realize that the finish line, you can't see it yet, but just keep moving. So this moment, even though it's basketball, you have a ball in their hand, they still had to sacrifice to, to do the things to get to back to, back to back. The first one may be easier than the second, because everybody knows you're playing now. But to be able to stand up and be consistent, but also I'm proud of them as young men, not just ball players, because it's bigger than ball. But sometimes people have to tell them that. I played college football, but I used college football to get my education, the thing that lasts, that 40 years that you talked about, that's the one we're playing for. So for them to have a target that they can't see, but have the faith that they can keep moving is everything. So what we've done is made sure that we're compliant in every way possible, even painfully compliant sometimes. Because great leaders have to be compassionate and indifferent. And we have to teach them to do the same, because they may have to say no to some of the people that they ride with every day, so they can continue the journey for life. That's what we're here for. That's the confidence, that's the team that we built. McCauley's DNA, yeah, I spent the time there. So I don't know if you're red or blue in this town or whatever, but it's not about that. My loyalty is to young men, to kids, to families, to young women, to society. And I'm honored to represent this school. I'm honored to, to get in the mud with them and get, get back in the mud, because I came from it anyway. I'm not scared of adversity. And one thing that you know, just like the firefighters will run into a burning building because they know somebody's life is worth saving. This is not changing lives, this is saving lives, this is elevating lives. And this will change this city. These young men right here that you see holding this ball may be sitting in those same seats right now, because now they see you. They can't unsee that now. So I appreciate this moment, I appreciate this microphone, I appreciate this opportunity to, to raise the level of all things possible in this city via these young men. So thank you.
Before you take your seat, I may have brought some heat to you a week or so ago, because I made the statement here that I'm going to be pushing to get a million dollars to redo the cafeteria at a charter school. And what I would like for you to speak to is if we put the cafeteria in, what difference will it make? Especially when you look at the academics of this school as opposed to the schools these kids would normally come from.
Thank you for that question. You have to stay ready, y'all told you all that, right? But here's the thing that we have to understand, is that when people love you, you don't even have to ask the question. When people care about you, you don't have to ask questions. The cafeteria, I didn't mention that at all. But I do know that two things that dictate the pace of play when it comes to schools. One, the bus schedule. Two, the lunch schedule. It's really amazing how that can dictate how you move kids through a school. And one of the things that Chattanooga Prep has done is that it has grown because of demand, because we want to serve more young men, because it's a free option. People say charter school, it is a public school. It operates by the same guidelines, but there's a, we have some flexibility. And one of the things about a cafeteria, which is true, is when you have more space, you have more opportunity, because you can gather the boys in larger groups, and you can move them through their daily schedule in a way. One thing I know about schools in Chattanooga, they may start lunch at 10:30 in the morning, and the last group may go to lunch at 2:30 in the afternoon. And part of it is how you move them through a building. So you take that same time, and you get that time back, and you have flexibility, then you could do some of the wonderful things that, some of the more creative things that can impact them in other ways. So in terms of that, one thing about charter schools is that we don't have the same, the funding model's a little different. So the buildings, the actual physical buildings, we have to try to figure out a way to, to raise those out of the ground in a different way. And so when you're using your budget to pay for a cafeteria, you're not using it to invest in the kids in a different way. So again, I appreciate the opportunity for you to share that. I didn't mention it, but somebody must have, he mentioned it. But, but I'm thankful for that, because that's something that would really make a difference for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Christian Collins, coach, would you come forward and bring your team with you? I need to say, you all have won two championships back to back and have not received the recognition for having done so. So at this moment, if you will come forward and let one of your players hold that for you. It looks heavy.
Good morning. First off, I want to thank each and every one of you all for allowing our boys to be here today. This is our first, not first year, but second year in a row that we were able to be so blessed to come before you all to present these two golden basketballs. On these gold basketballs, they just, they just don't represent, you know, just basketball on the court. It represents the hard work, the sacrifice, the grit, the determination that these young men had to overcome, not the first year, but the second year as well. It also doesn't represent them as basketball players. It also represents them as student athletes as well. We had a first senior class last year. I've got three seniors right here behind me right now. Although they're getting basketball scholarships. They got four academic scholarships to Alabama A.M., MTSU University. And also the younger class that's behind me, several of those guys already have multiple basketball offers as well. So I just want to commend these young men, not only for trusting me as their coach and a mentor, but also as a father figure too, because, you know, I always say, you know, to, to go through some type of adversity, you, you, you have to endure the storm, you have to endure the weather. And all, everything that happened with the school, not just the school, but everything that these young men had to go through outside of the school, for those guys to come together as what we call it at Chattanooga Prep, OBL, One Big Family, for those guys to come together and just unite and to bring these, this second gold ball back to Chattanooga, Tennessee, it just speaks volumes, not only for these young men, but for their parents and also for the city as well. And I don't think, you know, they did get the, you know, recognition they deserve. But at the same time, once again, if you look behind me, each and every one of these young men uphold a 3.0 or above GPA. And like I said, they uphold a 3.0 GPA. We had two guys, ACT scores 23 and a 27. And also, like I said, they're going to school for academic scholarship Um, and also, like I said, they're going to school for academic scholarship in the under, the underclassmen. The younger brothers also uphold higher GPAs and also a bunch of basketball offers. So once again, congratulations to you all, young men behind me. You guys, we'd be bringing applause. So when you think about Chattanooga Prep basketball, not only do you think about basketball, but you also think about the livelihood of these young men as well too. So I appreciate you all.
You good? No, no, I want you to come on.
Let, let me introduce you all to this young man. He's been at Chattanooga Prep since sixth grade. Um, he's our Mr. Basketball Finals. He's an all-time leader scorer at Chattanooga Prep. He's a three-time All-State Basketball Player. And right now he holds a bunch of offers from a bunch of Division One schools. Um, this is Mr. Derek Robertson.
I would like to thank y'all for having us here and like, uh, for recognizing our talents and what are we doing for the city and the different accomplishments that we have, um, achieved these past two seasons.
I'm going to ask your team to shake hands with the commissioners, but before doing so, the, your friends who don't go to Chattanooga Prep, when you look at what your classmates and your teammates are doing, compare to them, how are you guys doing?
Can you say it one more time?
Yeah. Um, you all are zoned for different schools. When you look at those schools that your buddies and friends and neighbors are going to, who are not at Chattanooga Prep, are you all doing better, worse, the same, or what?
I would just say, us as, um, Chat Prep as a whole, we're just doing what we need to do to, um, stay focused on our school and like, just make sure we doing what we gotta do.
And, and then finally, uh, Mr. Kemp, I want to invite the commissioners to come to the building when the students are there. And they will recognize that the way these men are carrying themselves, it's not like playtime. They are serious about what they're doing. So do look forward to other commissioners coming into the building. Sure.
So as you can see, one of the things that we're working on with young men is this, these guys are powerful and they don't realize their power. And they don't realize that most of their power is in their voice and the choices they make. And one of the goals, when we look at our vision for excellence for these young men, is to be able to step up to this mic and say it like they want to say it. Because right now, again, this is a moment and they're great and to be humble is everything. But everybody doesn't get a chance to step in the mic in this room like this. And one of the things that we'll make sure is every single boy, every single young man that walks through that building will be ready for any moment. And to be able to stand up and say it in such a way that he's done it so much that it's a habit. I went to the Ron Clark Academy for six years in Atlanta and fourth graders can step up to any mic at any moment and outtalk any person that's forty years or more above them because it's an expectation. These young men have a great expectations ahead of them. I'm so thankful that we have at least another year to work with most of them. Some of the guys who are alumni, we're going to take care of them too because that's what we do for life. You don't coach for the season, you coach for life. Great schools are not just for kids, they're for families. And so that's what we're doing. So anybody that wants to visit Chat Prep, just let us know and we'll show you what time it is now. I don't care what time it is somewhere, but it's happy hour at Chattanooga Prep all the time. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can they come forward and shake hands with the commissioner?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Mackey. With that, we still have a resolution to vote. Resolution eight twenty-five dash six. Motion, Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Highlander. See no lights, no one standing for comment. So Mr. Clerk, we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. So eight twenty-five dash six passes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Mackey. Madam Clerk, moving on to eight twenty-five dash seven, please.
Resolution eight twenty-five dash seven, a resolution to authorize the county mayor to enter into and execute a contract with Croy Engineers LLC for design services for the extension of existing Hilltop Drive to Volkswagen Drive adjacent to I seventy-five for an amount not to exceed one million five hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred twenty dollars.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Second. Mr. Smith made the motion. Commissioner Baker seconds that motion. Uh, Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Um, this looks like a great project. Um, I know a lot of folks saying it's something we should have done a long time ago. I'm glad to see that it get, that it's, that it's moving forward. Um, with this engineering, uh, one, almost a one point, a little over one point five million dollars for the engineering. Do we have any estimations as to what the, um, final project cost will be on this?
Mr. Janeway?
Uh, Commissioner Sharp, we, uh, early estimates show somewhere between twenty-two million and twenty-five million.
Right. Um, thank you, uh, for those numbers, Mr. Janeway. You know, uh, building roads is expensive. It's a critical part of, uh, our job to ensure people can move freely throughout our community. Emergency services can be provided. All this stuff is really important. That's a big price tag. Do we have any, uh, revenue streams currently identified to fund this project?
We believe because of the proximity to Enterprise South Industrial Park that there's a couple of state grants um, that we would be eligible for in the future. Part of the initiative to get the engineering done on the front end is so that it's shovel ready as soon as we identify some of those types of funds.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just want to bring it to our attention, I guess this is more for Todd Lehman, I guess, but, but one of my constituents, um, lives in our district, well, lives in District eleven. He brought it to my attention on this particular project. He's in the billboard business. And he wanted to be sure that the billboards that are on that road were really looked at heavily because they're very expensive billboards to move. So I told him I would bring it up today when we talk about these, this resolution. So I just, for the record, I wanted you all to be aware of the billboards. There's several billboards there that I guess would have to either be bought or moved. And, and, uh, he said if they were to be bought, they're very expensive. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
That's all. Thank you.
No lights?
Good.
Right? Okay. No more lights? No one standing for comments. So Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, eight twenty-five dash seven passes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, eight twenty-five dash eight, please.
Resolution eight twenty-five dash eight, a resolution approving the purchase of one twenty-two-four Peterbilt five thirty-seven Centennial Asphalt Distributor from Power Equipment Company from the Tennessee Statewide Contract amounting to three hundred thirty-four thousand one hundred four dollars and seventy-two cents for the Highway Department and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Second. Mr. Smith made the motion. Commissioner Baker seconds that motion. See no lights, no one standing for comments. So roll call.
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, eight twenty-five dash eight passes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, eight twenty-five dash nine, please.
Resolution eight twenty-five dash nine, a resolution to allocate expenditures of up to two million eight hundred forty-two thousand dollars from proceeds from the twenty-two-four A bond issue towards certain public safety projects and initiatives.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Uh, Chairman?
Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Graham seconds that motion. Uh, Commissioner Shipley?
Yes, I have a, uh, asking for correction to this or the wording. Uh, since the process started, City of San Jose gave Mowbray a fire truck. It was one that we replaced most of ours now. The Fire Department at Mowbray met and they've asked to use this money differently than what was appropriated. And to make it legal, they wanted that read into the record so that when they use the money, that way there's no recourse back to them.
Thanks, sir. Madam Attorney, because that's on the backup paperwork, it's not, I don't know that it's actually part of the language in the resolution. Do we still need to amend the backup paperwork to ensure that, other than the comment, the public comment being made, should we make that part of an amendment?
Copy of the handout.
Okay.
We can attach it to the resolution.
Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll make sure that's included.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharp? Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Um, with regard to these various, uh, public safety projects and initiatives, um, I mean, I, I have all intentions of voting for this. I just wanted to ensure, I could ask, um, if I may, Chief Roddy, are, are we confident, um, that these projects are in full compliance with federal regulations, including HIPAA? And the initiatives, any, any type of, uh, medical assistance projects, public safety projects?
No concerns relative to a HIPAA compliance issue have been brought forward.
That's all I needed to hear?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Cooper?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, the commissioners, the mayor, Chief Roddy, and the finance team, Lee and Vanda, for bringing this forward on behalf of all of Hamilton County units.
Thank you. See no more lights, no one standing for general comment. We'll go into roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey? Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, eight twenty-five dash nine passes. Includes finance. We'll go into building economic development. Commissioner Hilton?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you read eight twenty-five dash ten?
Resolution eight twenty-five dash ten, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into and execute a waiver of right of reversion as to specific property improvements and owner document related to property located at sixty-one twenty-one B Heritage Park Drive in the Bonnie Oaks Industrial and Office Park.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Hilton made the motion. Commissioner Beck seconded that motion. No lights, see no lights, no one standing for comments. So just ready for roll call.
Mr. Baker? Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey? Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, resolution eight twenty-five ten passes.
Madam Clerk, can you read eight twenty-five dash eleven, please?
Resolution eight twenty-five dash eleven, a resolution to approve a high-growth jobs and investment program grant to the Industrial Development Board of the City of Chattanooga for Master Machine.
Move to approve.
Mr. Hilton made the motion. Commissioner Graham seconds that motion. See no lights?
No lights.
No one standing. So roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey? Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, eight twenty-five dash eleven passes. That concludes the resolutions items. We will move into announcements. Commissioner Shipley?
Yes, uh, the only announcement I have is from my fire departments in my district. And I have four and a half, I think, and Commissioner Smith shared Dallas Bay. But, uh, they want me to let y'all know how much they appreciated the help. Uh, every bit of these funds are going to improve their apartments and they want me to let y'all know that. Thank you.
Mr. Baker? Commissioner Smith? Mr. Mackey? Mr. Beck? Mr. Sharp?
No announcements, Chairman.
Commissioner Hilton?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, this Friday at five P M. at East Hamilton High School, we are going to kind of have a grand opening for the new turf field. I invite everybody to come out and see how beautiful things are on Hurricane Hill. Thank you.
Commissioner Chauncey? Commissioner Highlander? Commissioner Graham?
School days, school days. Got to get back to school today. I want to welcome all the kids back to school today. My dad and mom used to say that to us every, every morning when the school started back, about school days. I think they were more excited about us going to school than, than we were. But, uh, I want to welcome the kids back to school in Lookout Valley and, and all District eleven. But I also want to do a, a quick thank you. Um, we have a, a real issue. I've, I've talked to Todd about it as well, but, but it's a state issue on a road. Cummins Road and Highway eleven or Birmingham Highway, we have a real issue there. It's a dangerous intersection and it's hard to, to maneuver in a lot of ways. And, uh, I called on State Senator Gardenhire and the very same day I called on him, he met me there. We went over it. Three days later, he brought T dot down from Nashville and, and got the ball rolling towards some kind of a solution. We don't know what that solution will be yet, but, but I just wanted to give a shout out and thank Senator Gardenhire for, uh, for getting on it so quickly and, and looking after that part of the, the highway there. It's, it's, it is really dangerous to try to get onto that highway, trying to get out of Cummins Road. So, uh, I don't know if he's listening or not, but I just wanted to thank him for all his support and hard work on that as quickly as he did too. Thank you.
Attorney Barnum?
I just wanted to let the commission know that the county attorney's office has officially moved back in the building. And, uh, we are, our desks are getting delivered tomorrow. So the renovation is done. And you all are welcome to come see it. It looks great.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor's Office. Okay. A couple of things. Number one, Bestie Shepherd took the opportunity last Saturday to go to cleanup day. We painted some halls and, and, uh, had some fun, uh, doing that. And I tell you, we got a, got a great, great, great staff. It's kind of weird how our district lines are. It's cuts off right by Bestie Shepherd and, and there's sometimes, that school sometimes is forgotten. And, um, and I tell you, for three years in a row, uh, we've gone over and tried to help on their cleanup day and paint. And didn't get the paint. Last year I worked outside, but they stuck the paintbrush back in my hand this year. So, uh, but I want to, want to congratulate them on, on a year. Also want to recognize teachers. You know, we talk about kids, you know, getting started back to school, elevating grades and so forth. But let's talk about teachers and, and what they do day in and day out to educate our future generations. And I tell you what, it, that's a special individual that year in and year out. How they, they do their role and do their job. Uh, and, and I was amazed at the number of dollars they take out of their pockets just to ensure that every kid in those classrooms, uh, have, have the same opportunities. So I, I just, I, I can't say enough about teachers. For me, the most important person other than the student in a school is that teacher. So I just, just want to appreciate what our teachers do. Uh, and congratulate them on, uh, starting a new year. Uh, with that, we'll go into public discussions. I want to make sure to remind everybody, uh, our rules around public discussions and in public announcements is not a dialogue. It's where you get to come up and you get to announce and, uh, talk to the commission, um, you get three minutes, cover anything other than discussion. And we'll begin with the first person. So we got the clock ready. Get three minutes and that'll begin with the, your name and address.
Timber Road Drive. Perfect. Um, so I woke up earlier this morning considering on what I would say and how I would say it. And I'll, I'll tell you that the last thing I'm trying to do is complain. The last thing I'm trying to do is, um, call names. I'd like to highlight some names that you hear a lot of. Um, I'd like to highlight just different terms, different laws. Tennessee State Constitution, Article twenty-three. I would strongly encourage anyone watching this to include the people up here to fully understand and recognize that. And if you need help understanding it, I would strongly encourage using some sort of Chat G P T, Grok, Lumo, Perplexity, you choose. You can just Google it. You can use a thesaurus. You can use a dictionary. But I would strongly encourage Article twenty-three of the Tennessee Constitution. I would also like to, I think we can all agree that John F. Kennedy assassinated in nineteen sixty-three for trying to more or less be truthful. He said, "Without debate, without criticism, no administration and no country can succeed and no republic can survive." We are a republic, gentlemen. We are not a democracy. I'm so tired of hearing people say we have a democracy. Um, we have a republic. I would strongly encourage those. a republic. I would strongly encourage those to understand what a republic is. I could go here on a soliloquy, but I only get three minutes given to by the chair, um, because in Tennessee state law, how long we talk and how long we can remonster, I would strongly encourage looking at remonsters towards the end of Article 23, the Tennessee State Constitution. I find it concerning, find it concerning that a commissioner last week said, "We need to silence the people from the audience because there are interrogations happening." I would say, "No one's being interrogated, gentlemen." I would say, "I'm asking questions." And I promise you, you can try to put every rule in front of me. I'm going to abide my First Amendment rule. I'm going to abide the Tennessee State Constitution. I'm going to abide all of it. You try to take my hat, I come in here dressed fancy. 29 seconds, eh? What will I say? I would say for the, the press, the old press up there.
Mr. Jones, just make sure you make your comments towards the commission, because this is-
All right, commission. I would say, listen to President Kennedy's speech, the president and the press. It was on April 27th, 1961. The very word secrecy is repugnant in a free and open society. A lot of secrecy going on.
Mr. Jones, thank you for your time. And also I want to say this. Mr. Jones, thank you for your service to our country.
I'm still serving, sir.
Thank you.
Time will begin with your name and address.
Okay. Uh, Monty Bell, the homeless journalist, the gray-haired fox, a man with a trillion-dollar voice. Address on earth. Um, education. Education. I don't, I, I, I don't know really, um, where to stop because there's never been any place to begin here in my hometown, my home state when it comes to education. I have spent the majority of my life educating. My field investigative reporting. Education. I'm not a basketball player or a football player or track player. I'm a student of education. Your history, your history, because it doesn't include me. I can start it here on 2020. Monty Duane Bell, the homeless journalist, the gray-haired fox presents fraud. The Chattanooga Hamilton County, Tennessee's 11 Judicial District Court, racist racketeering, but also corrupt white derision. Judge shopping hearings of 2009 through 2010. I ran that entire case. Not one story in your daily paper said that Monty Bell ran the judge shopping case of 2009, 2010. But the court records show that an associate, acquaintance of Monty Bell knows Monty Bell from his broadcasting career. He wrote this about my case. He said, he's a CBS insider and he writes this, "America is a country where race only divides." He said, "It's unreasonable to think that TV news executives would do better in racial matters than presidents and senators who all try to put all of this blame on President Trump and it's the skeletons that's right in front of me that's doing all of this." This thing on race was passed into law in 1964 by Lyndon B. Johnson. Your history tells you that every black leader like Monty Bell was assassinated from this state. Let me repeat. Let me, let me, let me repeat it. And, and, and you all have treated me the same way. I can go down with Magger Everts, Malcolm X, Martin Luther King Jr. All the aforementioned, you've got somebody on one of your mountains that stood trial for their assassination. I'm met by officers every time I come in here. I'm an educator, not your criminal. And I'm talking to all of you. My case says black-on-black crimes enforced by whites. You had a young lady that Washington sent down here, Tia Duggins, sat right here. Why she stood right here?
Mr. Bell, your time-
We'll be back next week, but your time's-
Thank you, sir.
Freedom. Get you next.
Next, begin with your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is, uh, Woody Wester, 1155 Ridgway Avenue, Signal Mountain. I'm speaking in opposition to the future proposed resolution from Commissioner Hilton advising the planning commission to change Plan Hamilton in favor of the home builders' last-minute demands. I believe Area 7, District 2 of Plan Hamilton is being exploited for profit at the sake of our residents and their families. I believe home builders like Green Tech and Pratt Homes are set to make millions to the detriment of our community. I've repeatedly heard concerns of affordable housing in Hamilton County. Let's look at current and proposed developments in Area 2 Signal Mountain. The sanctuary at Signal Farms by Pratt Homes, homes on half-acre lots starting at $600,000. Flipper Bend, 200 homes on one-acre lots starting at $1.2 million. Sawyer Park subdivision by Green Tech, currently slated for 118 homes and up to 1,500 homes total. These are one-acre lots estimated to start in the high $500,000. Eagles Crest, these are $1 million-plus homes. Are these affordable homes? These are not big expensive homes on big lots. These are big expensive homes on small lots aimed at maximizing profits by exploiting a desirable area. Families want to live in Signal Mountain because our, of our great schools. These schools are in trouble. From the School District Blueprint webpage, I quote, "Thrasher Elementary is well-known as one of Tennessee's finest elementary schools, but rapid growth of young families on Signal Mountain has overwhelmed the current facility," end quote. At the community feedback meeting in 2023, school superintendent Dr. Robertson said, quote, "What we note that is current on Signal Mountain is that both of our elementary schools are at or over capacity," end quote. According to the 2020 MGT Facilities Master Plan Report, both elementary schools on Signal Mountain have already exceeded the future enrollment estimates for 2028. In five years, no one enrollment increased 16 and a half percent and Thrasher 11 and a half percent. We are at double the growth, double the estimated growth in just half the time. We are currently in a school crisis. Our classrooms are overcrowded and it's only getting worse. Building more expensive homes at a greater density is not acceptable. Please do not let the home builders put profits over our community and our children. Vote no on this future resolution that should come up at next meeting. Thank you for your time. If you need copies, I do have copies of that resolution printed out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. See no one else standing and no other business. We'll be in recess until August the 13th at 9:30 AM.